I'd like to open up the Monday, March 28, 2016 workshop meeting. Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Warner? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer or a moment of reflection, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and the Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and Post on the Bolton Board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. The first item is manager's report on issues raised at prior council meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Dye. At previous council meeting, it was brought to the attention or request from Resident Rita Murano about the management structure of the Springwood Avenue condos. The board consists of two members of Interfaith and one appointee of the city. It appears to be city staff right now, it's Tony Nuccio. We'll be meeting with Interfaith in the next couple of weeks to discuss how these board members are actually chosen, because it's not in the ordinance, it might be in a redevelopment agreement, and the insurance requirements to make sure everyone is up to snuff. But that is the only follow-up from the last meeting. Thank you.
We're now on to special events applications. Leisha?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application is a carnival to be held May 26 through 30 in Bradley Park. Normally, this is held in Atlantic Park, but with I-STAR making improvements to the park, it couldn't be. So a meeting was held last week with the city manager, Brian Chirripka, Pastor Elijah Akins of Triumphant Light Church, and I-STAR agreed to remove the sprinkler heads in Bradley Park, assist with the mark-outs for the sprinkling lines, and to repair if there was any damage done to the sprinkler system in Bradley Park. Pastor Akins was agreeable to this, as was the city manager and the special events committee. So that's the reason why it's being held in Bradley Park. Next is a request to have a block party on Bangs Avenue. This is spearheaded by Red Moon Life and Home Store with the goal of highlighting businesses on that end of Bangs Avenue. It would be held on May 22. Third is the Beer Garden, a request to hold basically a block party to celebrate MyFest. And this would be held on May 20 through 22, Press Plaza. In conjunction with that is the next application. They would also like to do a beer run on Sunday, May 22, in conjunction with the MyFest event.
I think they changed it back to Saturday.
Okay.
I saw an email.
Right, I thought it was, okay.
Okay.
I'll confirm that.
Yeah.
I thought it was Sunday.
Okay.
Okay. Next is the Asbury Park Mermaid of Parades, which will be held--
No, you're right, Leisha, you're right.
Sunday?
Saturday, Sunday.
Sunday, okay. Next is the Asbury Park Mermaid of Parades, which will be held on August 27. This will be their second year returning, and it will be emphasized to the applicant that this does have to be a family-friendly event. Safe summer event. This is sponsored by the city and CDI, and the purpose of this event is to, for service providers, providing particularly summer programming to the youth in Asbury Park to interact with the parents of Asbury Park. So the parents know what's available for the children during the summer months. And next is Month of the Young Child, which is the annual board event preschool parade, which will be held on May 13. Usually, their ending location is Atlantic Park, but again, since work is being done in the park, it's being recommended that they end in Sunset Park. And next is the Garden State Equality Walk, to be held on June 18. They will meet in Kennedy Park, walk down Lake Avenue to the boardwalk, up to Convention Hall, and back to Kennedy Park. And lastly, we have two weddings, one on May, both on May 21st, one on Seventh Avenue Beach and the other on Second Avenue Beach.
Leisha, some of these didn't have fees on them, and maybe we were just saving dates? Like, the only one that has a fee is the AP Mermaid.
Then I apologize for that. They should have the fees, because all the application fees have been paid.
Okay.
My apologies.
Leisha, on the 22nd, there will be two events. One, the Bangs Avenue Block Party, blocking off part of Bangs Avenue.
Correct.
And then, and also, the Beer Garden would have something closing Press Plaza. Is that gonna close, what street? Is it gonna close--
It's just gonna close Press Plaza, and a small portion of Bangs Avenue, at Cookman.
Bangs from the end of Steinbach to Henry. Just the one block, trying to get attention to the stores on that block. And they both know it's the same date, we're both working together.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to review of agenda items for Wednesday's meeting.
I got a couple things, but I'll go first.
Yeah, go ahead. If you're ready, whoever's ready, go.
216-164, resolution authorizing the cancellation of municipal tax sale certificates due to erroneous block and lot. I just was curious what happened there?
The tax sale certificate had two or three block and lots on them, instead of having just the correct one, so we're just correcting it.
Okay. And then, there's 216-169, resolution authorizing the installation of surveillance camera and associated hardware along existing utility poles in the public right-of-way for the city of Asbury Park. Can I get a map of where these cameras are going? It says there's a, the resolution--
It's the senior center and the middle school.
But can I, I just wanna see specifically. It says there's a map in the resolution.
Okay.
Or the map, let me double-check before I say that, but I believe the resolution references a map. Yes, it says, "Whereas the map and plan for installing these equipment has been approved by the city engineer."
Okay.
So if there is a map--
It's gonna be the build-out map.
Okay.
And these two, there's two additional cameras being proposed, because we're under budget. It's the senior sen, it's senior building and the middle school. And we'll send out a map once I get it.
And is there a projected completion date?
No, not for these two. They're on target to complete everything by the end of this month, early next month. They're still on or had to schedule a lot of things, and these are just gonna be added on.
And then, 216-175, the resolution to adopt policies and procedures, that's the personnel?
Yes.
Okay. And then, 216-174, I didn't really understand that resolution.
You do have--
And I know something's coming from--
It's on your desk.
Okay.
It's on your desk tonight.
Where?
Underneath your pie.
Okay, so, you know, I can read this and then follow up if I still, if I still don't understand it.
Did you send me an email?
I didn't get the one my emails today. Okay.
I can explain it if you want.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Back in 2004, if not previous to that, there was a line of credit between Asbury Partners and the city for condemnation and eminent domain. There's no reason for the line of credit to exist anymore, because as part of the subsequent amendments to the master developer agreement and the waterfront redevelopment area plan, both parties have to agree. If we want to condemn, master developer has to agree. Master developer wants to condemn, the city has to agree.
Okay.
There's no point in having a line of credit when both parties have to agree, and they would be required to do it via escrow. The line of credit was just if case master developer wanted to do something, we'd have the money for our own professionals, which is, which isn't needed anymore.
Okay.
You know what, you did send me an email. Now I remember. Are you finished?
I'm done.
Just 2016-165 and 167, would you just explain those, please?
Under, for 165, under the state statute, you're allowed to charge after the second tax sale certificate is requested. The city just never charged for the three-fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh request, so this follows the state statute that we can actually charge now. And for 166, every year, the city should be establishing a resolution for service charges for return checks.
No, 167.
Records were incomplete, we couldn't find some tax sale certificates. We didn't know where they were. Tyrone's gone through everything, the tax collector, so we need to reissue them, and there's a charge for that.
And last is ordinance 2016-12. Just, why, why is this an emergency?
Just to get a, correct me if I'm wrong, just to get it in place as quick as possible for safety. If I'm wrong, correct.
You have the ability to declare an emergency and not have to wait for the 20-day wait period that's required under the Faulkner Act, following the adoption of an ordinance where it's deemed necessary for health, safety, and welfare purposes. So if council makes that determination and declaration that it's an emergency, the 20-day wait period would not apply. So it's our understanding that the police have requested this for health and safety, and they'd like to have it effective immediately upon adoption.
And just so everybody knows what we're talking about, it's the ordinance redoing the bicycles, scooters, everything, where you have to wear a helmet, you have to have reflectors, you have to have a light, so it's just speeding up the process instead of waiting 20 days.
That's it.
Okay. 162. I just don't understand, other water companies saying they use zero gallons, and we're saying they use some. If they use zero gallons, then it should be turned over to abandoned properties. It's impossible for, I think, for a house that's, even if you leave something dripping, so, you know, there's a pipe in the wintertime, to use zero gallons.
I wasn't able to speak to Mr. McEwing today. We kept missing each other on emails and phone calls, but I'll get a clarification for zero on that one.
Okay. Okay, so 176 and 177, we're not gonna get tonight, you're on your phones there?
Yes.
And I can respond regarding 177. 177 is awarding, potentially awarding the contract for the pedal boat, the Swan Boat Concession on Wesley Lake. We put that on tentatively, because the proposal due date is Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m., and it depends on how many proposals are received and whether we will be in a position to make a recommendation to mayor and council to make an award that evening, but we put it on as a tentative. It may or may not be coming forward, depending upon whether and to what extent the city receives proposals on Wednesday morning.
And Resolution 176 is award of Springwood Contract Phase, Springwood Park Contract Phase Two. More than likely, we're going to pull that pending a couple more final reviews for financial, which I'll explain under my section as we move along in the agenda.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, now we're on to matters by council.
I will, just very quick. I just wanna thank the Recreation Department, the names of Lisa Floyd and Cassandra Dickerson for taking care of and sponsoring and organizing the 81st Easter pageant on the parade, on the boardwalk, and thank all those people who participated and the winners.
No, she took mine, she took the last one.
Sorry, Jesse.
Michael, do we have an update on the parking RFP?
It's due next Wednesday, so I have a couple hours scheduled, blocked in my calendar to review, see who responds. I anticipate calling some of the review members from the last, and hope to have that on the agenda for that night.
And what's the status of paying online on our website?
It's good to go.
Do you wanna just say what people can pay online now?
All taxes, sewer, regular taxes, it's just really sewer and regular taxes.
Okay. And because some people have complained about the mercantile license and getting these late fees, just so I'm clear, Cindy, notices went out in November that your mercantile license was due on or before March 1.
Correct.
You were then sent a second reminder in January--
Correct.
--that your mercantile license was due, and so after March 1, then you were charged a late fee.
Correct.
And I don't think Leisha's here, but we talked about putting the channels of AP-TV on the flashing sign. Just so people know that they can, you know, we have a ton of community events on, on those AP-TV channels. Can we put that up on the flashing sign? I know you don't change it every day, but when you change it--
No, it actually works now, so we can change it.
When we were running for office, we talked with people about better ways of communication, and I think that Hannah's doing a great job online with Twitter and Facebook and social media, but the other thing that we talked about doing, and I don't know if everybody's still on board with doing this, was possibly doing yearly, bi-yearly, quarterly newsletters because of the high level of senior citizens we have who may or may not be online, who may or may not watch AP-TV. It was a way to send a mailer out, you know, I know that's probably expensive, so I don't know how often we could do it, but just kind of, you know, catching everybody up on the fact that you can pay your bills online, whatever, whatever's going on in City Hall. You know, I briefly talked to Hannah about it, but I was wondering if we could kinda get a plan to see if we could send out quarterly or bi-yearly newsletters to residents in Asbury Park.
Sure.
Okay.
I was gonna put that in my head, sorry.
And then, the last thing I wanted to thank, Madison Marquette and Tim Donnelly and everybody who put on the Cold War. I was at work, but from what I heard, it was a really fantastic event.
That's it?
That's it.
It was a fantastic event. Couple questions. Everybody loves the new boardwalk lights. I love them also, but I just wanted on public record for everybody to hear, they're guaranteed up to winds of how much?
120 or 130 miles per hour gust. We're waiting for the cross sheets from the manufacturer, but he's told that to the city engineer. He's on vacation this week. Once we get the cross sheets, they'll be provided.
I've noticed it several weeks now, and I noticed it more this past week, being Easter weekend and everything. As much as we've made mistakes with parking, and we're correcting them every day, we still have a major mistake where I had to go downtown Friday night, I went out to dinner Saturday night, and I parked in the city hall parking lot, and it's virtually empty. So we have to do a better job of letting people know, city hall parking lot is open. I mean, I was down at a restaurant on the way down Cookman Avenue, and people were going around like vultures, looking for a parking spot, circle and circle. When I left, it was like 8 o'clock, there was like 45 open parking spots right here. And I'm up there at eight, and if I can walk from here to my restaurant in five and a half minutes, it's not that much of a walk. So if we need better signage, if we need, if we need the restaurants and the businesses to help us advertise, "Hey, can't find a parking spot? Go to city hall parking lot. It's wide open." But that definitely needs to be done.
And to that point, so if you left at eight, I came at eight for dinner, and the parking lot was also bare, and then got, left dinner at 9:30, and there still wasn't many more people in the parking lot.
So that's just a word we have to get out. I don't know how we do that. And have we heard anything from Gary, what's his name, from the state?
No.
Oh, I guess we're never going to. Even if I keep on saying his name, I forget his last name tonight.
The last thing he reached out to me was they couldn't find their copy of the agreement between us and them, and asked me for it.
Last thing, okay, with the talking of skateboard park and everything else, I think whatever happens there is gonna happen one way or another, but I think we learned a couple stories. Number one, I think our signs are unfriendly, that they say, "No picnics at parks." I think our signs are inconsistent, where some parks say, "No ball playing," and others don't have them. So how do we start cleaning up that mess? First of all, take it down, do we have to, was it done by ordinance, no picnics? So do we have to reverse the ordinance, saying no picnics? I mean, what do we have to do to make the parks more friendly and usable?
I'll sit down with the DPW superintendent. We have a meeting scheduled next week, and I'll bring it up of, we've talked about when he was first hired, about trying to find a way to do a sign inventory of all the city signs, what they say, how they look, replacing them, refacing them if needed. This will just go on to that agenda.
I think if you could move these up to the top of the agenda, it would be appreciative. Again, sometimes you start off with question A, and you get the answers to questions C, D, and E. So I mean, so question A was asked, but we found out we have problems with B, C, D, and E, and really, to have parks that say, "No picnics," is like, mm. I can, I can understand no liquor, but no picnics is, we're going back to the 50s. That's all I have, thank you.
Matters by the city manager?
Thank you, Ms. Dye. The workforce development RFP has been received. There was one respondent. I'm looking at it right now to, to possibly recommend to the city council to reject or award, might wanna make some tweaks. The cost was $118,000. That's the ballpark where I thought it would be, but you'll have a recommendation for the next meeting. Police accreditation was also out to bid. There was one respondent for that, the Riders Group, at a cost of $42,000 or $43,000. That is being recommended by myself, the police department, and the JIF. That resolution will be next month, for your consideration. The city also received proposals for the LSRP, Licensed Site Remediation Professional, for cleanup work at Department of Public Works, which has been ongoing for a while. 22 respondents provided applications for it. We're in the process of reviewing them. That will either be recommended for award or rejection at the end of the month. And lastly, number four is financial management consultant. Myself and the mayor met with Mr. George Haber, the state's technical advisor, technical assistant for the transitional aid. One of the things that was discussed was a full-time CFO position, which is now more than ever desperately needed, as there are three utilities and $52 million in budget. The state, under the transitional aid application, has the ability to appoint anyone they want for fiduciary matters. But working with the state, it is recommended that the city hire Phoenix Consulting, which is, the principal is Mr. John Reinhardt, to lead the search for the CFO, the full-time CFO, at a cost of approximately $150, $150 an hour, which would take about 20 to 30 This has been signed off by both Mr. Haber and Tim Cunningham, the division director. So I'm recommending that we begin the search process of a full-time CFO. And that's for consideration for Wednesday. That's all.
Matters by the city attorney?
Yes, the only matter I was going to bring up this evening was actually already addressed, and that is the fact that the due date for proposals for the first of the summer concessions, the pedal boats on Wesley Lake, is this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., and we may have a recommendation for award that evening. The next one to follow is the beach chairs and umbrellas, and the others will be following thereafter.
I do wanna add one thing, I'm sorry. I just mentioned it, for the Springwood Avenue Park. Currently, the city for Phase Two doesn't have enough funding to complete all the tasks. This is the base, plus through the alternates. We do have a capital ordinance for the revaluation that wasn't completed a couple years ago. There was extra money. So what we're gonna propose is, if bond council can finish it for Wednesday, do an introduction by title of a reallocation of capital funds, which will then allow us to do the entire proposed Phase Two, which includes the bathrooms, the fencing, all the vegetation, and the digital sign. So that would go into effect the first weekend, the first meeting in, first or second meeting in April, and then it's an award. So it's a three or four-week delay for the award, but we'll have the money to do everything with some official money for change orders.
I hope that digital sign's not like the Main Street digital sign.
Well, that, at that, I think, you not being part of the process, as much as they were alternates, they were like a wish list, like in something like, well, Santa Claus doesn't bring it, doesn't bring it, but meanwhile, we don't wanna delay the opening of Springwood Avenue Park, 'cause we don't have a fence and a bathroom, because of cherry trees and a sign that we don't even give a damn about. So I mean, we're not, we were told by our financial advisor, by the acting city manager months ago, correct me if I'm wrong--
You're right.
--that we had enough money to do the two alternates that we wanted. And the rest were just like, well, if we have money, fine. And plus, we were gonna get a lot of in-kind donations for all the trees from--
From Mom's Conservation Foundation.
So yeah, so we need a meeting ASAP to get this on the agenda Wednesday.
It is on the agenda for Wednesday, and if you just want to award the bathrooms and the fencing, we should be fine now.
Well, then, let's do it. I mean, we don't want this park opening in August, we want this park opening in May. And it's not gonna be on to the end of April's agenda, because we're looking to plant shrubbery. I mean, that's ridiculous. Let's, let's get the bathroom in, let's get the fence up, which we promised everybody, and open the park.
Okay.
And we were told we had tons of money to do that. And as far as the digital sign, I think I sent you an email, but I sent so many, I thought we paid the first contractor to run all the conduit, because that was the only one that came in extremely overhead, where I'm gonna say, I'm gonna be wrong, our estimate was like $40,000, came in at $70,000, and I thought, maybe they didn't know everything's been run, as far as, so that could be added down the road. But that's, I, I, the sign and the trees cannot delay this park opening two months, especially when we have the music series starting at the end of May, beginning in June.
Okay.
So if you have money for the first two, put it on the agenda, and let's vote on it, and let's get it going.
Sure.
Correct?
Correct.
And I know Yvonne and Jesse, Amy and Joe, you know, we've all been part of this discussion. I think Yvonne and Jesse more than anybody, and it was like, let's get the park up and running, because we've been promising this, we, the city, for like eight years, and to keep on delaying, delaying, delaying is ridiculous.
What, what I would do then is, I'll double-check to make sure there's enough money for A and B, which is the bathrooms and the fencing, and still recommend we move the money over for future improvements, or in case there's cost overruns, it gives us a little bit of leeway. Because we don't need the money that's sitting there for the revaluation anymore.
Well, we may, I have no problem with that, and that's something we can decide down the road. Instead of spending $70,000 for a sign, if it's out of capital funds, I may wanna buy a garbage truck instead of, or something else, like garbage cans for the parks, instead of just saying a $70,000 nice sign that, you know, it doesn't work half the time, because we didn't pay for rides.
Sure.
All right. As long as you move it, but don't spend it.
Rather have the ability.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. And throw something in if you want to, because you--
You know, you know how I feel about the park, and I don't wanna see any more delays because of funding, especially when we were told that we had the monies required and necessary to complete the park. And I'm really disappointed that we're finding, I'm finding this out tonight, but all right.
You can correct that.
And these delays came way, way before your time, Michael. These have been delays for years.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And unfortunately, I don't think you've been given the whole background, so you're learning some of it tonight. So nobody, we're not shooting the messenger. We're shooting the message.
Leisha didn't fire me this time.
Yet.
Any other matters? Have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
What would?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, well, everybody knows to drill. Talk to yourself in a proper manner. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please. Each person has a limit of three minutes.
Hello, Dan Melandro from North Beach. Comment on the new lights on the boardwalk. I think they came very nice. The nice thing about it is that they put a lot more on both sides of the boardwalk. The only concern and question I have, there are a couple right now where the lamps are tilted, and with the high winds, it's nice to hear that the design is made for high winds, but what's the mechanism when we see something that's, you know, a light that's not-- but what's the mechanism when we see something that's, you know, a light that's not working or it's out? Who to call?
That would be me. And we are actually doing a walkthrough at 7:45 tonight to go through those project problems and issues. And one of the things with the lights is that they are manageable, the candles. So right now, those lights are at 100%. They really should be operating at 75%. We'll also be addressing those issues tonight. But at 6:00, 7:45 tonight, we're doing our walkthrough.
Okay, there are two, Mike. On the north, the north side, I know, I took down one number. Number 59 is tilted, and there's another one further north on the opposite side that's tilted.
And that's why we put the numbering on them, so we know exactly where they are. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think somebody put that on one of the social media sites. And I sent it to Michael and he said, "It was because when they bolted it down, they didn't put the right bolts in." So it had nothing to do with the wind. It was more of a construction error. So they will be corrected. And that's why I wanted it on the record because many years ago, when I worked for the city, we were told the traffic lights were guaranteed up to hurricane winds and 30 mile an hour winds. You still see no traffic lights on Third and Kingsley. So I wanted part of the record. They're guaranteed up to 120 miles an hour.
That's good. But not yet, just again, a nice job.
Thank you. We thank everybody who's part of it.
Hello, my name is Sharon Leek. 1317 Washington Avenue. The residents petition to pave Washington Avenue. We undesigned residents of Washington Avenue are concerned citizens demand the city of Asbury Park immediately address the long neglected conditions of Washington Avenue and completely pave the entire street from Prospect to Ridge Avenue. We understand the temporary inconvenience associated with giving us a pole, pothole-free road with proper drainage and curve, and welcome the final results respectfully, diligently. When visitors and families and other people come to visit. I live on Washington Avenue, and I've been living there now almost a year. And I'm a longtime resident, taxpaying resident of Asbury Park. But I moved on Washington Avenue in August in a very nice house right across the street from Good Hope Church. And I moved there because I take care of my niece and her children, and we needed a bigger place. And that place was available to me. But when I moved over there, that street is so bad, like I'm embarrassed to even have people come to visit me. And not only that, they don't even want to visit me because they don't want to tear up their cars. And you really can't blame them because it's really bad to travel back and forth. And me myself, I have a car that I have to maintain, and it's expensive to keep my car in line. So I have a maximum, and I can't afford those payments just for coming home, you know, back and forth to work and tearing out my car. And that street, from what I understand, has not been paved in years. So, you know, all due respect, I have a petition signed here from... I went door-to-door on Washington Avenue, and then I also gave a sheet to the church, and they signed it. So I have a petition, three pages here for, you know, consideration of that request.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't want to cut off your time. There is no question Washington Avenue is in, I'm going to say, fairly bad shape. If you ride the entire streets of Asbury Park, you'll see many of the streets are in worse shape. Okay, I want to make sure you're hearing.
I'll see if the gas...
Okay, so... Okay, yep. Washington Avenue is in fairly bad shape. Compared to other streets in the city, it's in great shape. Washington Avenue, the gas, either the gas company or the water company did a cut all the way down. Washington Avenue is one-way going west, and they did a cut, I'm going to say, on the north side of the street where they paved over that, where half your street is basically dry. You can go up Sunset for Third, Park, Webb, everything. We started a road improvement plan. And this year will be the first year that streets are actually going to get paved.
In how many years?
In many years. And so Washington Avenue probably will not be on the first go-around of paving, but is on the list for the second go-around. And we looked at it, but the streets are worse.
So what do you think that second go-around will be, in a year, two years, a month?
I'm hoping the second year of the paving plan, which would be 17?
17 or 18.
17 or 18. And... Well, and I'm not saying you're not correct, but there's no question, the streets throughout town, you can drive Drury Lane, Steiner, Webb, Eighth. I mean, you see dirt, you don't see even pavement. Where, at least on Washington, you do see pavement. Fourth Avenue is atrocious. I live on Fourth Avenue.
Well, like you said, the water company came and they did that. But when they did that, they told us all to not park on the street that we were having that street paved. And we all moved our cars thinking that our street was going to be paved. And the street was blocked off from Bridge to Prospect all day. Like, I had to walk to my house, then to come back, and it's not done.
Well, I can only...
It was a lie. They said they was paving the street.
I can only apologize...
Blocked off the whole street.
I can only apologize for what the water company told you. They told you something that was out and out, false.
But they blocked the whole street.
But well, when we go to do Sunset, Fourth, or even Washington, it's going to be blocked for like, maybe a week or two because you got to mill. You got to mill, and that means removing the old, compacting it, and then putting down the new asphalt. So I mean, it's not a, it's not a 24-hour job to repave a street.
Well, I did go door-to-door and I asked the residents, and we all are willing to do that because in the meantime, if we don't, the repairs on our car is going to cost us way more than just walking from, you know, neighboring areas to my household. We got to over two weeks, as long as I don't have to pay the repairs on that car because I can't afford it.
No, I deeply appreciate it, and we are on top of it. And like you say, in the last four years I know a street has not been paved in Asbury Park. Probably longer. Right, so we're picking up the pieces. We can go out tomorrow and I say, we can bond tomorrow for $30 million and double everybody's taxes and pave everybody's streets. But I don't think you'll be happy about that either. So we have to do it gradual and like phase it in where we're not burdening the taxpayers by correcting like 20 years of mistakes in two years. We have to gradually do it. And we appreciate your petition, and we will stay in touch with you and let you know where we stand.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for going door-to-door and getting the petition. Next?
Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, Rita Moran of Eighth Avenue. I wonder if there was a report on the senior building yet?
You came in late. He gave it. But go ahead, finish your question, so we'll give it again.
What is it? Oh, okay.
Okay.
The, that was one question. The other question was on page six, the health benefits that are being paid to the employees that are long departed or gone or resigned or they're on vacation somewhere. One payment is $1,900 a month. I mean, I read the resolution. I know Cindy didn't write it because it's poorly written, and I hope the city manager's going to look at it. That resolution has to be changed. You have to drop it. These people that retired got everything coming to them, and they signed off. How come they're getting payments now for their health plans? It's not right. It really isn't right. $1,900 a month on some of them? You think that's right? And it's the Cadillac Plan. If you're going to have to pay insurance, you're going to have to change your policy like all of us had to do because you can't afford these payments. That's number two. My third question was, I know John was at that meeting that I went to. Could you tell me what that was about? And that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Let me go to the... I forget the first question.
That's me.
Oh, that's Michael. I'll handle the second question. Rita, we've discussed it before, and I've tried to explain it to you. And I'm one of the people on that page six.
I know you are.
Right. When I retired, I had X amount of dollars left. Now, the city could have either paid me then, and we'll pick a round number, could have paid me then $50,000, or I could have taken that $50,000 as per a law made by the past mayor and council, approved by the state in New Jersey, saying, "I get that money towards future benefits for my wife and daughter if needed." And I can only use it within five years of my retirement. I can only use it for a total of five years. So that was the law, that was passed. So the city could have paid me that $50,000 then, or else I could have taken that $50,000 for future benefits for my wife and daughter. I chose the latter. Some people chose to take the entire cash payment and not choose the latter. I mean, later, latter. So that, you know the plan, and it was passed by mayor and council. I've told you before, since I was part of it, I had my attorney review of it, and he said, "It's a good plan, but it will not fly unless the state in New Jersey approves it." Which the state in New Jersey approved it. So that's the bottom line. And as far as $1,900 a month, that's probably, and I'm guessing, that's probably a family plan with children, and that's what, we're in the state health benefits plan. I believe the state, under the MOU, requires us to be in the state health benefits plan, and that's what the premiums are. The insurance throughout the United States is ridiculously high, but that's what the going rate is. Now that Michael answered question one.
About that, you have somebody on there that collects disability. Doesn't he get a health plan?
Who's that?
From the disability? I'm not going to mention names.
Okay, I looked at the list and I sent the list to, because there's people on there that are getting, that are listed on there that retired before this was passed by a previous council. What they're doing is they're paying COBRA. They're saying, "I want to continue on the city's insurance." For them to do that, it's taken out of their pension check. So the state in New Jersey's taking out their pension check, and the city has to make them whole by giving them the same amount. So there's some people on there, like the BM person, the retired many years ago, not my relative, with an I, that that's what they're doing. They have a COBRA plan. So he or she has decided, yes, I want the city insurance, I'll pay $500 a month, but it's coming out of their pension check, so the city has to make them whole. And that's state law. Now, as far as other people on there, I saw somebody was added, I saw somebody was dropped, and I have those questions in the finance myself. And I will, Michael, answer question number one.
Just because the state of New Jersey approves something doesn't make it right.
Oh, then...
I'm sorry to tell you that.
They make the laws. So if you want to change the laws, I suggest we all get a bus and go to Trent. But to change the state laws, we cannot do it here in Asbury Park.
Okay, but have you considered changing the health plan to a cheaper plan?
I think I already said, the MOU says we have to be in the state health benefits plan. Okay, Michael's going to answer question number one.
Okay.
Or two, I forgot one.
Let's go, Michael.
The board is comprised of two people from the Springwood Development LLC, which is two people from Interface and one city employee, which is Tony Nuccio, right now. It's in their bylaws, which we haven't figured out if it's in the redevelopment agreement or in the ordinance. I'm meeting with Interface in the next couple of weeks to discuss their board and their insurance requirements. They do provide to the city an audit of their expenses every May, which goes to the CFO. And they provided copies of the meeting minutes in their budgets. But the board is comprised of two members from the LLC, which is two members of Interface, and staff person here right now is Tony Nuccio.
No taxpayer? Since we have a condo?
No.
Don't you think a taxpayer should be on there? Nuccio doesn't live here.
I don't know why they did that. I don't disagree with you.
I know, I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying, that's got to be changed. And they don't have meetings, do they?
They have yearly meetings.
They adopt the budget and that's it.
Do you know what the budget is?
Forty-four, forty-five thousand. I'll give you, I'll bring the documents for the next meeting.
Okay, can I get a copy?
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing, Amy said when she ran for city council...
You said your time was up. You're fit to make... Go ahead, last question.
Okay, when you ran for city council, she said you made certain promises. What about the budget committee promise? That was one of them. I just wanted to remind you.
Thank you for the reminder, Rita. Thank you for the reminder.
Were you here when Michael said we're going out to search for a full-time CMFL?
I was happy to hear that.
So it was all...
I made you happy, Rita?
Okay.
It needs your help, Reverend.
Jennifer Lambert, 905 Heck Street. My first question was, have you considered putting "Walk, Don't Walk" signs on Press Plaza and on Cookman? Like, I always feel like I'm going to, you can't tell when the light's going to change, like Hoboken and other cities. You know what I'm talking about? Like, when you go across the street...
Like the hand...
Yeah, like the most, yeah, like most cities have. It's just getting, we're getting a lot of foot traffic in town, and I don't know. I just think it might be something to start thinking about moving forward. So anyhow, it's a suggestion. And then the other suggestion is, well, first, I really think it's really fantastic, the committee that you're forming with the business owners in town. I think that's really, really great and really needed with all the growth that's going on. But I feel like you missed including venues. And I think you should consider having two representatives of the venues because it's the culture and like, the heart of Asbury Park is the venues and the...
When you say venues, what do you...
Stone Pony, Wander Bar, Paramount, House of Independence, The Saint. The venues. Like, all the things that are, the convention hall. I know it's sort of very much Madison Marquette-focused, but it's, it's, I think that venues and the events and the things that are going on in the city are super important to be a part of those conversations. If it's not something that you do initially as the committee starts, it might be something that you would consider moving forward. But I think the committee's great, so thanks for doing that. And lastly, I was late, I got the time wrong. Was everything cool with the event that I proposed?
We turned it down.
Huh? You turned me down? No!
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We vote on it Wednesday, Jennifer, not, just FYI.
But it's looking good.
A good... Alicia made a well, a good presentation, and it was well-received. And you are working together with the other closing of the street on Dinesh Avenue?
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I told the crowd.
I reached out, yeah.
Tracy Rogers, 900 Monroe. On the budget, in engineering, there's an increase of $100,000. I just wanted to know where that came from. And can anybody tell me how many units I-STAR has been given, permitted to, to build on? The actual permit as to right now, what the number is? And we have talked about the oil, the grease oil, in the meeting, mayor. There are two companies that actually do pick up recyclable oil. One is Darling International and Newark. And I'm trying to get the name of the other establishment. And once you get that recyclable oil, you can add it to your clean community dollars as recycling. And the cost overrun on the park, I didn't understand whether these, these things are added now or were they in it and supposed to be paid for? Or is this, they're actually additions, extra items that it's going to be paid for? So I didn't, I didn't understand what exactly those, those items. But that's it.
I-STAR can build approximately 3,200 units in the waterfront.
No, no. Well, they were reduced. That was reduced.
No, 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 in the plan, it's 3,200. It has not, whether they build 3,200, they're not required to build 3,200.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
But they are allowed to go up to approximately, I may be off by 10 or 20, 3,200.
No, no, what I was asking for is the actual permit number. Because it says in agreement, per permit number, is after they get to a level of permit number, they actually give the city a million dollars?
At 600, they give us another million dollars.
Yeah.
Right, they're not, they're not close to 600.
So not, not close to 600 yet?
No, because the hotel doesn't count.
Okay, yeah.
It's residential units.
Residential.
Right.
So what is the expected plan in the next year? Do we know?
Well, the only thing we know they're building is supposedly and allegedly, and which I believe is the... 1101 site, which will not put them at 600.
So they still haven't put them at 600?
No.
How, do you know how close they are to 600?
They are close to 600, I don't think. I mean, I mean, think about what they built, Vive, Wesley Grove.
You got to add in Wesley Grove, North Beach, everything. We can, we can get you that number.
Yeah, I just need the permit number because I think that's money that's left on the table that residents need to want.
And that's why we want them to get to that 600, so we get the million dollars to spend it elsewhere.
And, oh, and the cost of, yeah, and everything else. The cost overruns on that park?
There's no cost overruns on the park. The first phase is being completed shortly. The first phase is being completed shortly. This was for the second phase involving the bathrooms as the prime and then a bunch of alternates. To award all the alternates, we'd have to move some money around, but I don't know when you came in, but the council is, requested of me to do the prime, which is the bathrooms and the fencing, and we're still going to move the money around in case there's cost overruns or for future improvements. It's, we're hedging for the future, but doing today. Concerning the $100,000 in engineering, that is for the LSRP programs that we have to do. The DPW site is, is quite honestly a mess. It involves four test wells from 2013 for contaminants that needs to be reopened, and we might have to drill some more test wells. And those are, you know, anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000 a pop, depending on what you have to do.
That's, was that in the salary? The increase was in the salary?